Warm welcome to... Okay, thank you so much. We're gonna try that again. The formal meeting of the Board of Education for May 23rd, 2017 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Chair Kurler will be arriving late this evening. We have two revisions to the agenda. The superintendent's report and the first reading of the real estate policy will be scheduled for a later date. So, we would like to warmly welcome all of the valedictorians here tonight and your families and fans. We are honored to welcome our students who've achieved such excellence in academics. Tonight, we will meet our 2017 valedictorians from every high school in the district. Each valedictorian will come forward and state his or her name, and the last student from each high school has been selected by the group to answer the question, "What in your years at Portland Public Schools has prepared you for your next steps?" Superintendent McCain, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. It's a tremendous honor to have the opportunity to thank our valedictorians and their parents because it's not just the students who do the work, it's the parents behind the scene that raise the kids. Again, recognizing our valedictorians is a highlight of our year. It takes an incredible amount of hard work and dedication to achieve and maintain such high academic standards. I am very pleased to acknowledge your commitment to excellence. As you head off to college and career, remember the world needs your talents, your grit, your determination, and your passion for excellence to make the world a better place. Thanks for all you've done for yourselves and your schools and larger community. Best of luck to you all and best of luck to you as you continue on into your very bright futures. And now, I am pleased to introduce Oscar Gilson, Senior Director of College and Career Readiness, who will provide the details of becoming valedictorian, and then we'll introduce each high school valedictorian.
Good evening.
Good evening. Gracias.
Yes.
Status, a student must have a... Okay. To achieve the valedictorian status, a student must have a 4.0 grade point average or have the highest GPAs in their senior class. This year, we're pleased to have 111 graduates who have met this high standard. Achieving valedictorian status is a result of hard work and commitment on the part of these students. On behalf of Assistant Superintendent Antonio Lopez and our high school administrators, I commend you for your success now, and I wish you to continue success for the years ahead. I also want to thank the teachers, counselors, friends, mentors, and especially the families. All of them have contributed to the achievement that we are recognizing you for. The valedictorians are led by their school counselors or administrator. Each school has selected one student to speak on their behalf, and we are going to start with Alliance at Benson.
Good evening, my name is Abigail Tamey. The relationships I've built at Alliance at Benson are what prepared me for my next steps into my future. The teachers aren't just teachers, they're your coaches, mentors, and friends. And your counselor isn't just your counselor, she's your motivator, biggest fan, and best friend. Because of these relationships, I'm more confident about going to college, and I am positive that when I do fall back, they're the ones who are going to catch me and push me back up. I want to thank the wonderful staff at Alliance and my dad, who is the reason why I'm here today. Thank you.
Alliance at Meek.
Hi, everyone, my name is Kincaid Davis, and before going to Meek, I was kinda lost. I didn't really know what I wanted to do with my life or myself, either, you know, through college or career. And since going to Meek, I kinda know what I want to be now. It's really just all thanks to my teachers, and, you know, when you're there, it's... Since it's a smaller school, you feel a really close relationship to them. It's more like they're a mentor and a kind of, almost a friend to you. And I really would just like to thank all of the staff there and my parents for, you know, helping me get here. I'm really proud of myself and I'm really thankful to all of them.
Benson High School.
My name is Aunt Hua, and I go to Benson High School.
Dexter Kearney, Benson High School.
Kim Led, Benson High School.
Hello, everyone, I'm Rose Nguyen, and I'm Benson... I'm from Benson High School.
Good evening, my name is Leslie Tran, and I'm from Benson High School.
Hello, everyone, my name's Teresa Tran, and I'm also from Benson High School.
Hello, my name is Calpatubo, I'm from Benson High School, and I stand before all of you today and God completely humbled. As a person of color in America, I'm aware that I had to constantly fight a system which worked against me and my peers. PPS has taught me to withstand hardships and difficulties that may come my way, from lead in our pipes to falling ceiling tiles. Benson High School was never your typical high school because of our majors, like medical professions and dental and construction, and our increasing diversity with each and every year. However, there, I learned to persevere and endure what may come my way. We learned and adapted through, from our low budgets and oppression from outside sources, but like a wildflower up through the pavement, we persisted. If a lesson was imparted to me and my fellow valedictorians this year, I mean, these past four years, it is that we must keep going no matter how large the mountains are before us. So, I thank you, I thank my fellow valedictorians, my teachers, the staff at Benson High School, and PPS for this great honor. Thank you.
Cleveland High School.
I'm Tate Kalum from Cleveland High School.
My name is Derek Chen, and I'm from Cleveland High School.
I'm LeAnn Chen from Cleveland High School.
I'm Lizzie Edwards from Cleveland High School.
I'm Vivian Hwin from Cleveland High School.
I'm Lucas Carey from Cleveland High School.
Zavi Cole.
Emma Kemper, Cleveland High School.
I'm Alwin from Cleveland High School.
I'm Hannah Proctor from Cleveland High School.
I'm Zach Stevens from Cleveland High School.
I'm Jessica Vin from Cleveland High School.
Daphne Williams-Hutfield, Cleveland High School.
I'm Alicia Estes from Cleveland High School, and one of the most important things that I have learned from my years at PPS would be that of passion from the teachers and passion in everything you do, whether you are doing something that you want to teach or if you're doing something that the state is mandating you to teach. As long as you have passion, and as long as you want and try to give your message with all of your heart to everyone, then that message will be received, and using that knowledge, I will take that into my life in order to help others and help myself.
Franklin High School.
My name is Jasmine Calderona-Riola, and I am from Franklin High School.
Artie Geiger, Franklin High School.
Emma Harbison, Franklin High School.
Delaney Hartman, Franklin High School.
Emma Kepler, Franklin High School.
Nicole Perkins, Franklin High School.
Logan Rec, Franklin High School.
Alicia Sante, Franklin High School.
Jessica Yu, Franklin High School.
I'm Tucker Coconhour, and if you haven't guessed the pattern yet, I'm from Franklin High School. It's a big prompt that they ask you for tonight. It's how has PPS, over the past 13 years, encouraged you to lead a better life later on. And so, the first thing that popped in my head was a quote from the Greek philosopher Heraclitus. He said, "No man steps in the same river twice, for it is not the same river and he is not the same man." For the past 13 years, PPS has provided us with a river of opportunity, and as we carry on in our tributaries of destiny in the future, we must remember where we came from to see where we're going. As long as PPS is able to feed the endless thirst for knowledge with a generous stream of education, only success can be found for the students and for the staff. So, finally, I just want to, I just want to, one last quote, it's also water-themed. "A rising tide lifts all boats." And so, I encourage you to be better people so that our society can be better as a whole and that we can all become better as one. Thank you.
Grant High School.
Max Terry, Grant High School. Noah Shapiro, Grant High School.
Frances Conable, Grant High School.
Liam Dubay, Grant High School.
Rebecca France, Grant High School.
Eden Holt, Grant High School.
Julia Kankel, Grant High School.
Yuri Petty, Grant High School.
Chalita Rung-Rotsekunin, Grant High School.
Ersten Rydel, Grant High School.
Alden Davis, Grant High School. So, I don't have any really cool quotes for you guys, but instead, I'd like to tell you just a little bit about my experience in PPS. So, for those of you who do know me, you'd know that I have a little bit of a mantra, happiness is a mindset, and that you basically get to choose the experiences that you get to have in this life. So, high school is a time when life is easy, and the only real job that we really have is to expand our minds and taste the world around us so that one day, we can kinda decide what it is that we love in this world and want to chase it. As growing teenagers, still trying to figure out what all that means, how we can spend a lifetime pursuing something, it's of the utmost importance to express yourself, and PPS kinda allowed me to do that in the darkroom, where as a science-minded person, I was able to create and capture memories with my hands, something that I wasn't able to do in my biology and chemistry classes, and that was very refreshing for me. So, quick little story about why even though, you know, school kinda feels like a lot of busy work that we're getting through and, you know, reading a long book, that doesn't make a lot of sense, but the time that sort of it all clicked for me was last year in my philosophy class. My teacher, Mr. Gavitt, said one day, when half the class of 15 is asleep, that, you know, like, school, you can kinda go to school and you can get A's and, you know, it's really cool, but you can leave, and even if you got those grades, you don't necessarily have really gained any knowledge, you didn't necessarily learn anything, and that's wrong, but that's on you, that's, you can't, that's on you. So, you choose to learn, you choose to be passionate about something, and you take that. Since he told that to me, I was like, whoa, man, maybe I should listen to that. He kinda knows what he's talking about. So, like I said, science-minded person, very into biology, chemistry, the natural world blows my mind, I love to ski and hike, all that stuff. So, this year, after keeping that in my mind, I'm like, I should put those together. Where can I go with that? So, I've been volunteering research and rescue this year, been a really cool way to combine my hiking every week, camping every other weekend, but also learning, wilderness first aid, all that stuff. Back to that first day that Mr. Gavitt said that, and I really took that upon myself where it's, it won't be given to me. Like, I can't just go to college thinking that, oh, it's a really cool school I got into, like, I'll become a great thinker because of that. But, yeah, from there, I wanna send everyone off with that, just take it into your own hands, and to the seniors, like, we made it. Cheers.
Jefferson High School.
McKenna Erickson, Jefferson High School.
Naomi Jefferson, Jefferson High School.
There, Sliman, Jefferson High School. Hi, my name is Joedell Marx, and I'm from Jefferson High School, and I actually transferred into PPS my sophomore year of high school. I was drawn in by the opportunity to earn college credits at PCC, and what really kept me in the Portland Public School system was, and at Jefferson, was the family. I found a family at Jefferson and a home, and I learned about critical thinking in more than just an academic setting, but in a life setting, and thinking about, like, how I can influence my environment and how my environment influences me and others around me. And I just wanna say thank you to all of the Jefferson High School administration and everyone else who's made that possible, because it's an incredible experience to come into high school and to learn to be a human, not just an education subject, but to be someone who grows and becomes something. So, thank you and congratulations to everyone.
Lincoln High School.
Ruby Bell Booth. Ari Chamov.
David Chariton. Spencer Daigle. David Denmestill.
Eden Miller.
Olivia Osgood.
Ben Pagano.
Rebecca Reynolds.
Oliver Rish. Brad Subramaniam.
Ms. Stewart.
Lindsay Unitan.
Serenity Wade. Laura Epperson.
Jessica Chow.
Hi, my name is Kate LeBlanc. As valedictorians, we've helped PPS in numerous ways, from running school bond campaigns to starting clubs to captaining sports teams. But, PPS has also helped us in immeasurable ways. PPS has given us so many opportunities, not only academically, but in terms of extracurricular activities. We are so lucky to be in a district that cares so passionately about its students. It is becoming clearer and clearer that one of the most important predictors of future success is grit, or the ability to overcome failure and continue to persevere. Researchers at the University of Pennsylvania actually found that the best predictor of academic success was grit rather than IQ. By challenging us, PPS teachers and administrators have given us opportunities to fail, and by supporting us when we don't achieve our goals, they have helped us to develop grit, which will allow us to succeed in whatever future endeavors we undertake. In my physics class, my teacher would always tell us to use the tools in our toolbox. Of course, what she meant was to use the equations and skills we already had to solve new problems, but I think this metaphor is very applicable to life as well. PPS teachers and administrators have given us tools such as leadership, confidence, and knowledge, but it's up to us to use these not only when we succeed, but also when we don't. We will all likely face many new challenges as we move on into our next adventures, and we will likely occasionally fail during those challenges. But thanks to the great teachers, administrators, parents, and friends we have had at our PPS high schools, we have the tools to face failures, learn from them, and then get back up to try again. Thank you.
Madison High School.
My name is Jimmy, and I'm from Madison.
Hi, my name is Anthony Nguyen. In all of my years with PPS, I've had the opportunity to learn a lot of different lessons, whether it be about science, math, English, and more, but I think that the most important lessons I learned was in building relationships, and so that's what I feel has prepared me the most for my future, because 10 years from now, science will change, technology will change, but what won't change is the need to communicate with other people. And so, that's what I'm grateful for, and that's what PPS has given me. Thank you.
MLC Metropolitan Learning Center.
Hi, I'm Esme Cottingham, I am the only valedictorian at MLC, so here's my speech. Hello, fellow graduates, PPS administration. It's nice to see all of you here tonight, I didn't think there'd be so many of you. It's here that all of the guides and templates tell me to quote a famous author or a celebrity, but I can't do that for you, 'cause I have nothing left to say. There's no snappy quote or cheesy one-liner that can prop up my speech for you. I have spent the last week trying to decide what to say when standing up here in front of you, but I just don't have anything. Thank you.
Roosevelt High School.
My name's Kumaria Watson, and I go to Roosevelt.
My name is Elsie King, and I go to Roosevelt.
Hi, my name's Daniel Roxmore, and I go to Roosevelt, and through all my years with PPS, I think I've learned a very important lesson, more than anything, is that sometimes you just need to sit down, be humble, and then remember that in the end, it's gonna be alright.
Wilson High School.
Hi, my name's Gabrielle Cohn, and I go to Wilson.
Hi, I'm Sam Nathanson, and I go to Wilson.
Hi, my name is Sophie Rubin, and I go to Wilson.
Hi, I'm Eleanor, and I go to Wilson.
Hello, I'm Madison Conkle. I'm Sagan Gim. Alright, so, the prompt of PPS, what they, what kind of opportunities they've given you. So, this year, I think one of the most, one of the best things I think PPS has given me is the opportunity to be in leadership and help the school in that way. This year, we got to host an event called West Fest, which brought a bunch of different schools. We had Grant and Lincoln all come together, and we hosted a nice event, and all the proceeds went to Lines for Life, which is a suicide prevention hotline that helps students and teens help cope with anything that they're dealing with, and PPS has given us the opportunity to host events like that and have events and grow as a community together, and that's something I'm really grateful for from Wilson and PPS.
And then, I also wanna thank our principal, Mr. Shatard, and our staff at Wilson, not only for having such a great program in the first place, but also for being flexible and working with students' needs. I'm very fortunate this year to take part in a brand-new math class and a brand-new Spanish class, and I've learned a lot from those classes. I'm very fortunate that the school is there and able to support me and help me further my education.
Superintendent and board, these are our valedictorians for the class of 2016-17 school year. Just give it up.
Well done, well done, everyone. We're gonna take a two-minute break before we resume the rest of our meeting. Thank you all for coming tonight, and congratulations to our valedictorians.
Thank you all for doing this.
Thank you, and awesome, thank you for coming. We filed an appeal with the superintendent about repeated physical bullying of my son. He was choked, hit in the face, slammed down seven times. In the appeal decision letter the superintendent sent us, he admitted that our son was targeted, and the bullying escalated. Somehow, that's still not enough for them to take a meaningful action. The district offered us the same option through the entire process, the same option that already failed my son, and he's being forced to leave school. No option is viable when it ends in my son getting attacked again or leaving his school. The superintendent used the entire 30 days to respond to our appeal, and then mailed us the letter. The dates on the letter show that he made his decision days earlier. He even actually emailed my husband between the time he made the decision and mailed us the letter, and he sent it just in time for the bond vote to be passed. This is not fair or an ethical process. He gave us no real solution and says there's nothing he can do about it. Do you need a child to die like that eight-year-old in Ohio before you do something about bullying in Portland Public School? We have kept our son out of school for 60 days. Because he's terrified of that child, he actually still has nightmares about him every night. And what can I say more? He got hit seven bloody times. My son is having nightmares about him. My son is the victim, and the victim should never have to ask to leave school because he's being victimized by another child. There is no law in the United States that says that a child that has a developmental disability gets to get away with beating another child. I see a lot of people here sitting there. Last time I was here, the superintendent, who's sitting there to the left, shook his head and said, "Oh, he was so troubled about this whole situation." Well, the decision that he made does not show me that he was troubled about what happened to my son. The school board needs to stop, start doing its job, and supervise the superintendents and make sure that they do their job, because my son is being hurt. Other children are being hurt. When I tried to meet with Antonio Lopez, he told me he could not talk about it because the principal of my son's school is his wife. So if this is, if he thinks that's a conflict of interest, why is he in her chain of command? If you feel like you cannot supervise your wife to do her job properly, why are you supervising her supervisor? He told us we could not record him, where he's let white parents record him, he's let Asian parents record him, but for some reason, black parents cannot record him. He left us in the room, was rude to us, kept sending somebody else to tell us what he was going to do or was not going to do.
Okay, excuse me, we can't take public testimony on individual employees, but continue, please, if you have anything left to your testimony.
I can tell you what he does. The assistant superintendent told us he would not see us, even though he had already had an appointment with us. All right? So I want you two guys to look my son in the eye and tell him why he cannot be safe in his school, because I pay my taxes like anybody else here. And when I came here as an immigrant, they told me my children will be safe here. I can have children here. They will be safe here. My son should not be hit. His fingers have been bent backward. He's been hit in the face. He's been choked several times, and that's with one person in the classroom, which is the same decision that you're giving me. I know you have four weeks left, and it means nothing to you, but my child deserves to be safe in school. Somebody told me, "Well, if you don't like it, take him out of school." Why should I do that? That's why I pay my bloody taxes.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Superintendent McCain, would you like to say anything about the process regarding this complaint?
Yes, there is an appeal process, and you're certainly welcome to appeal to the board. That's the proper venue for this. This is not the proper venue to air your complaint.
Oh, yeah, because I have all the time. Yes, you did not answer us for three weeks. You never did anything about it. You guys are unethical. You are cowardly about this. You need to do your bloody job. My son, there is no law that says that my son should go back to school and get hit by that other child.
Thank you.
None of you, or you parents, do you understand what that does to a mother? Do you understand? This is my child.
I know.
His face has been scratched, he's been choked.
Thank you.
There is no right, you have no right to do that to my child.
That's not true.
You're the brats of us children, you bloody piglets.
That's not true.
They're just a bunch of liars.
Lydia Gray Hollifield, are you here?
A bunch of cowards, and you laugh, you were smiling in my face, you Amy Cunningham, and there's nothing funny about what happened to my son.
Oh, it's not funny. I was smiling at your son. I was smiling at your son. Thank you. Next. Bob, you have a question?
It's very disconcerting and upsetting.
There is a complaint process that went through the process.
Yeah, but that complaint process takes about 30 days, or that guy's right. The complaint process is, it should be settled up in some way tomorrow, in my opinion. I don't know how it should be settled up, because I'm not there, but it should be settled up quickly so that little boy can get back in school.
Just give us a recap of where we are with the process. You rendered a...
They went through an initial process. I looked at the results of the process, and they were given some options, and they have the right to appeal it to you as the board.
The options were not viable. You told me to send my son back in school with an extra person who was there when he got choked and slammed to the floor with that child.
Okay. Ms. Houston, do we have more public testimony?
Yes, we have two. Matt Purvis and Gabrielle Mercedes Bolivar.
Hello. Either way, okay. I was just going to ask, is everyone, I assume, knowledgeable of what happened at Grant High School a couple of weeks ago? Okay. Well, before I start, I just want to let everyone know that I'm speaking with all respect to the issues that were involved and everything, and I just want to announce that first. Patriarchy, privilege, mansplaining, rape culture, by now you're probably aware of most of these terms in today's society, and from a glance, these terms spread awareness, equality, fairness, and truth, but if these ideas are in fact true, shouldn't they hold up to criticism and debate? Shouldn't they welcome it? Shouldn't they at least allow it? Well, they should, but they don't. These philosophies demand...
We can work smarter with the resources we have. I was so impressed by Mary and how willing she is to collaborate with other departments. She's not just asking for more resources, she's asking for people to work together to serve the best interest of kids. And when you have people like that who are solution oriented, whose hands are being tied by the fact that everyone's working in a silo, you're not only going to lose kids, you're going to lose good staff who are trying their best to serve them. So I would really encourage the district to look at that and how we can all move forward as a priority too. And I know that this is under consideration, it's already something the district is talking about, which I think is wonderful. But from a parent perspective and a community member perspective, I would really encourage that that is the direction that we continue to move. How can we let go of our own kingdoms and do the right thing for kids? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Superintendent McCain?
Hello?
I can hear you.
About special education and the siloing, that is a matter that I'm looking into as I continue to restructure the district. And I'll be coming out with a restructuring plan which will change how they are positioned in the hierarchy of the organization so that their voice is at the direct report table, which is the table where all of the top people meet. That to me is a glaring absence at this point. So, and I've had some conversations with Mary and others about this matter, so just so you know.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next, we have Lydia Gray Holyfield and Shirley Paul Pruitt. Welcome.
Okay. My name is Shirley Paul Pruitt, and I'm here to talk about how PPS failed my son. We filed an appeal with the superintendent about repeated physical bullying of my son. He was choked, hit in the face, slammed down seven times. In the appeal decision letter the superintendent sent us, he admitted that our son was targeted and the bullying escalated. Somehow, that's still not enough for them to take a meaningful action. The district offered us the same option through the entire process. The same option that already failed my son, and he's being forced to leave school. No option is viable when it ends in my son getting attacked again or leaving his school. The superintendent used the entire 30 days to respond to our appeal, and then mailed us the letter. The dates on the letter showed that he made his decision days earlier. He even actually emailed my husband between the time he made the decision and mailed us the letter. And he sent it just in time for the bond vote to be passed. This is not fair or an ethical process. He gave us no real solution and says there's nothing he can do about it. Do you need a child to die like that eight-year-old in Ohio before you do something about bullying in Portland Public School? We have kept our son out of school for 60 days because he's terrified of that child. He actually still has nightmares about him every night. And what can I say more? He got hit seven bloody times. My son is having nightmares about him. My son is the victim, and the victim should never have to ask to leave school because he's being victimized by another child. There is no law in the United States that says that a child that has a developmental disability gets to get away with beating another child. I see a lot of people here sitting there. Last time I was here, the superintendent who's sitting there to the left shook his head and said, "Oh, he was so troubled about this whole situation." Well, the decision that he made does not show me that he was troubled about what happened to my son. The school board needs to start doing its job and supervise the superintendents and make sure that they do their job. Because my son is being hurt. Other children are being hurt. When I tried to meet with Antonio Lopez, he told me he could not talk about it because the principal of my son's school is his wife. So if this is, if he thinks that's a conflict of interest, why is he in her chain of command? If you feel like you cannot supervise your wife to do her job properly, why are you supervising her supervisor? He told us we could not record him where he's let white parents record him, he's let Asian parents record him, but for some reason, black parents cannot record him. He left us in the room, was rude to us, kept sending somebody else to tell us what he was going to do or was not going to do.
Okay, excuse me, we can't take public testimony on individual employees. But continue, please, if you have anything left here, testimony.
I can tell you what he does. The assistant superintendent told us he would not see us, even though he had already had an appointment with us. All right? So, I want you two guys to look my son in the eye and tell him why he cannot be safe in his school. Because I pay my taxes like anybody else here. And when I came here as an immigrant, they told me my children will be safe here. I can have children here. They will be safe here. My son should not be hit. His fingers have been bent backward. He's been hit in the face. He's been choked several times. And that's with one person in the classroom, which is the same decision that you're giving me. I know you have four weeks left, and it means nothing to you, but my child deserves to be safe in school. Somebody told me, "Well, if you don't like it, take him out of school." Why should I do that? That's why I pay my bloody taxes.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Superintendent McCain, would you like to say anything about the process regarding this complaint?
Yes, there is an appeal process, and you're certainly welcome to appeal to the board. That's the proper venue for this. This is not the proper venue to air your complaint.
Oh, yeah, because I have all the time. Yes, you did not answer us for three weeks. You never did anything about it. You guys are unethical. You are cowardly about this. You need to do your bloody job. My son, there is no law that says that my son should go back to school and get hit by that other child.
Thank you.
None of you, or you parents, do you understand what that does to a mother? Do you understand? This is my child.
I know.
His face has been scratched, he's been choked.
Thank you.
There is no right, you should have no right to do that to my child.
That's not true.
You're a brat of us children, you bloody pig.
That's not true.
They're just a bunch of liars.
Lydia Gray Hollefield, are you here?
A bunch of cowards, and you laugh, you were smiling in my face, you Amy Cunningham. And there's nothing funny about what happened to my son.
Oh, it's not funny, I was smiling at your son. I was smiling at your son.
Where's your compassion?
Thank you.
Susan. Next.
Bob, you have a question?
It's very disconcerting and upsetting.
There is a complaint process that went through the process.
Yeah, but that complaint process takes about 30 days. Or that guy's right, the complaint process is, it should be settled up in some way tomorrow, in my opinion. I don't know how it should be settled up because I'm not there, but it should be settled up quickly so that little boy can get back in school.
Just give us a recap of where we are with the process. You rendered a...
They went through an initial process. I looked at the results of the process, and they were given some options. And they have the right to appeal it to you as the board.
The option was not viable. You told me to send my son back in school with an extra person who was there when he got choked and slammed to the floor.
Okay. Ms. Houston, do we have more public testimony?
Yes, we have two. Matt Purvis and Gabrielle Mercedes Bolivar.
Hello. Either way? Okay. I was just going to ask, is everyone, I assume, knowledgeable of what happened at Grant High School a couple of weeks ago? Okay. Well, before I start, I just want to let everyone know that I'm speaking with all respect to the issues that were involved and everything. And I just want to announce that first. Patriarchy, privilege, mansplaining, rape culture, by now you're probably aware of most of these terms in today's society. And from a glance, these terms spread awareness, equality, fairness, and truth. But if these ideas are in fact true, shouldn't they hold up to criticism and debate? Shouldn't they welcome it? Shouldn't they at least allow it? Well, they should, but they don't. These philosophies demand our utmost support and unquestioned loyalty. In fact, these philosophies resemble more of a religion than a science. They claim to know things that they cannot know. They claim things that cannot be proven or unproven. And they do this all while promoting sexism, racism, bigotry, and hate, at least oftentimes. These ideologies value people more on their superficial characteristics than their qualities, their actions, and good deeds. And they use shame, guilt, fear, and often hatred as weapons, and demand that we submit to their will like an authoritarian dictator. So when a class at Grant High School was taught rape culture, most people didn't think much of it. And one teacher stood up and did. He's a history teacher, he wrote a three-page essay questioning rape culture, and he was quickly made an enemy of the state. His arguments were not addressed, although they were carefully and respectfully written. And he asked, he was not asked to speak to the class on his opinions. He was not given his day in court, so to say. He was made a villain to the media by the school that he taught at. He was forced to apologize. And, you know, he's called a lot of bad names as well. The school stated that they were free speech, but only free speech that was in the spirit of the school. And I asked, what does that mean? Counselors were sent in to help students that were traumatized, victims, feared for their safety. Did they really feel all these things? I mean, if they did, fine. If they valid, if it's valid, fine. But it's a letter, and it's just questioning certain things that are being taught in the school that may need to be questioned. This teacher never had a chance. And I fear that we're setting a very scary and troubling precedent when we censor and condemn a teacher for asking unpopular questions to students. This teacher did something brave. And I think that if we don't stand up for teachers like this, we're promoting group think, promoting propaganda. And it doesn't really matter whether you're for rape culture teachings or not. The point is, is that people get to speak their minds, and they don't have to do it in fear. That's what America is all about. So this teacher stood up to that injustice and did something incredibly heroic. And I'm just asking that the school board do the same and stand up for the students so that they get a fair and equal opportunity at the facts and that teachers, you know, don't live in fear and can express unpopular views without being condemned for it.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome.
My name is Gabrielle Mercedes Bolivar. Good evening, Dr. McCain, PPS Board of Education and student rep, Ms. Bradley. I'm sure you're tired of seeing me here every month. I want to clear up a few misperceptions about Oakley Green Middle School. While it is true that the implementation was a disaster, our school is not a disaster. With the placement of senior director Carl Logan as the interim principal, systems and structures are finally being implemented that support students and staff. Mr. Logan keeps an open door for students and families. He collaborates with students' families and staff to mediate conflict and listens to multiple perspectives. Due to Mr. Logan's position straddling to serve both as a senior director and interim principal, he is not always able to be president at OGMs. I believe if Mr. Logan was in our school full-time, he would have an even greater impact in improving our school culture and strengthening our academic and support teams. What has become evident after our own family's experience and hearing from other students and families and some teachers, Mr. Logan has set the bar for the essential key characteristics, knowledge, skills, abilities, and experience that we need in our permanent principal. While we continue to struggle to undo the harm that resulted from an inexperienced admin team placed at OGMs, I remain hopeful because Mr. Logan has exemplified what an effective middle school leader is. I am also here this evening to discuss Alliance High School, a PPS alternative program under PPS's multiple pathways to graduation. Seventy-nine percent of Alliance students are combined underserved. Thirty-two percent of Alliance students receive special education services. Fifty-six percent of Alliance students are students of color. The mission of PPS: Every student by name prepared for college career and participation as an active community member regardless of race, income, or zip code. The mission of Alliance Pro Meek Tech is to provide academic and professional technical opportunities that motivate students to remain in school to learn the knowledge, skills, and attitudes needed to become a contributing member of society. Here's the thing, though. Students need to belong. It has been made clear to Alliance students through PPS board action that they do not belong at Benson. Their Meek campus, originally built as a small elementary, does not have the program space for students to meet graduation requirements, including physical education and science. The PPS Multiple Pathways to Graduation mission is to provide educational options for all youth that empower, engage, and prepare them for college, work training, and global citizenship while serving as a vanguard for systemic educational change. The district is committed to providing an appropriate learning environment for all students. It is challenging for PPS to meet this commitment to Alliance students when their program does not have an appropriate and right-sized facility to serve all students in need. I encourage PPS staff to explore placing Alliance at Jefferson High School. Jefferson is geographically located six blocks from the MAX, next door to the North Portland Killingsworth Library, across the street from PCC, one block from Unite Oregon, formerly Center for Intercultural Cultural Organizing, and approximately 10 blocks from SEI and many more programs. Jefferson students benefit from the SEI wraparound program and PCC partnership that could serve Alliance students. Additionally, Alliance would have the capacity to serve more students at risk of not graduating or have already dropped out and are working with the PPS Reconnections Program. Jefferson has a current enrollment of 590 students. It could be worth considering the potential for Alliance to have a permanent and appropriate facility for all current and future Alliance students. Providing them with a place they belong and that is located in an area where many programs exist that would benefit students at Alliance to achieve their full academic potential. And I also included the data from PPS on this. And I'm not an Alliance parent, but I just feel that it's our responsibility as community members when we see opportunities and we also see displacement, that we work together to come up with collaborative solutions for students.
Do we have your testimony?
Yeah, I handed it. Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say I really appreciate your testimony. As far as placement, that's hanging in the air right now, but your advocacy for Alliance is well warranted. Sometimes we don't hear as much about programs that are highly successful but are a little further under the radar. We saw an Alliance graduate tonight that was a wonderful person. I actually met him in the four-year area. So just so you know, that's on my mind. I'm not saying that we have a great solution at this moment, but we are looking at it. And thank you for your advocacy for Alliance.
Thank you. Ms. Houston, is that all? Thank you.
Yes, that's it.
That's all. All right. All right, I would like to invite Suzanne Combe, President of PAT, to the testimony table for your comments. Welcome.
Thank you Chair Konstam and Board Directors for time on this agenda. Thank you Superintendent McCain for your time. And thank you for that great ceremony to honor all our valedictorians and all the educators here. Really, it was a great experience for us to see that and your mutual interest that can give us so much pride in the education we're offering. However, I'm here to talk about the budget that you're going to vote on tonight. And that budget does not honor our contract and does not honor our agreements. And this is troubling for many reasons. And I believe, Steve, you were on the board when we agreed to this contract, and Pam, this is your signature. And so, not following the contract is troubling for many reasons. One is, we've been working for years now to rebuild trust. Honoring a contract is a key part of that. We've been in interest-based bargaining where we're supposed to be talking about our mutual interests. And this is not meeting that. And the bigger pieces are around accountability and from the top to the classroom educators, let's be accountable to the decisions we're making. So as a result of the budget that you're voting on tonight, we are going to be filing what is called an unfair labor practice, and our intent is to file that on Thursday. And there's four areas that the unfair labor practice is going to cover. Those are workload, Appendix F, prohibitive subjects of bargaining, and snow days. And so basically, what's taking place is you and your bargaining team are doing what is called bad faith bargaining. So I want to start by talking about the workload. And that is in Article 5. And so the paragraph reads, "Beginning in the 2014-2015 school year, the district, at its discretion, may extend the standard work year by up to two days, which shall be paid at a per diem basis, provided that extended days would have to be cut prior to a reduction in staffing levels." We want more instructional days. The campaign for Measure 97 has been going on for years with a buildup, with that action in the fall being our culminating effort so that we might extend the school year. And I want to thank Steve Buehl, and Mike Rosen, and Tom Kurler, and Paul Anthony, and Julia Sparza-Brown for your support in that. And it's a tragedy that it didn't pass, and it's a tragedy that we're underfunding our schools, and that's a mutual interest that we share, and we want to work with you on But so when I'm here as the president talking about ULPs and workload, maybe it's a glaze over, we're not connecting to the issues why you serve in this volunteer position and why I serve. And I kind of want to bring it back to who I am, what I've been doing my life, how I ended up in this position, and what I want to do when I'm done being president. And that's teach students. I brought you these things. That is almost every class photo I took. One's missing because it's from Whittaker Middle School and it's this big. I couldn't scan that nicely. And you'll see a variety of my teaching career, starting as a fifth-grade teacher and then teaching two years as a special education teacher. And if you look through the packet, you'll see what my class size was then in order to give my students one-on-one attention. And then you'll kind of see where I found my niche, which was teaching middle school, particularly seventh grade. And though I loved teaching seventh graders just about anything, I really, really thrived in teaching mathematics, and I love it. And teaching middle school math presents itself with its challenges because students come to you, for whatever reason, really believing that they're bad at math, and they don't like math, and it's not their great subject. And basically, by the end of the year, I would have all these students that would say, "I do like math. I want to be a math teacher. You know, I'm good at math." And then, one year, I got this very special, unique opportunity to teach a very small class size of students who had never passed their Math Oaks test. Now, I'm not protesting or anything like that. In fact, this is a reason not to be pro it. Because they had never passed, they arrived with their self-esteem even worse than the typical middle school student around this, and really just defeated around the area with a lot of blocks up around, you know, even being in a math class. And with that one-on-one attention, almost all those students ended up passing. And who cares about that? Because even better, they took on leadership positions in the school district, they came back, they went on saying, "Math is my best subject. Math is my favorite subject. I'm good at math." And I was able to do that, not because I'm a miracle worker or some miracle curriculum, it was because I had a small class size. Let's just be clear about that. So when your bargaining team says things like, "Well, we're not the worst in class size," or "We're not as bad as Beaverton," that pains me. I didn't run for president to be like, "Not as bad as Beaverton," or "Not the worst of the metro area." I'm going to take a leap of faith and assume that none of you, Ryan, on that campaign plan, like, "Don't worry, we won't be as bad as Beaverton." And in case anyone's worried that I'm like throwing Beaverton under the bus here, I did call the president first. And even the president of Beaverton agrees that we don't want to be like Beaverton. That's a very low bar. So I want to work for a district that strives for excellence, not a march to the bottom. I want a district that empowers educators like me, educators like us, to make a real difference in the lives of our students. And so if you are serious about every child's future, let's get serious about doing what works. Staff our schools so our students have the support they need, which means one-on-one attention. And now, you've made some great steps. I believe tonight's budget has some restoring of the counselor positions, the media specialist, PE, and that is a fantastic, great step, and I thank you for that. But we need to restore all our staffing levels so that students can have the one-on-one attention they deserve. Then, and only then, when we've adequately staffed our schools, should we be adding days. And that's the way you honor your contract and honor the agreements. The next area is Appendix F. And I'll read the last paragraph to you. "Should the district maintain an eight-period day or a six-of-eight schedule at district high schools, the district shall have until the 2016-17 school year to reestablish the student load levels at the 2010-2011 levels required by Article 5, Section D, provided progress is made each year towards achieving such student loads." And I'll admit that we were wary that we were going to reach that, and we did. And I thank you for that. We followed that this year. But with this budget that you're approving, you're now violating our contract. You did not have to offer a six-of-eight schedule. Your bargaining team says that the board wanted a six-of-eight schedule. And so if you want it, then you have a duty to honor your obligations in this agreement. Now, we have shown some willingness to compromise around this. But to compromise, your bargaining team needs to show some movement. They need to come to us with some proposals. Because once again, you're taking away one-on-one attention from students? In exchange for what? The next subject of the unfair labor practice is around prohibitive subjects of bargaining. And so what that means is that your team is making contract proposals that are offering less than what the state law requires. And so that's not okay. So for example, the state law says that if you are a temporary teacher and you are fired in the middle of your position, you have the right to a board hearing. As a board, you hire and fire. Shouldn't you listen to an appeal from a temporary teacher that a mid-level manager suggested should be fired? Your team says no. Offering less than the state law is happening for both bargaining units that I represent, so it's also happening for our substitutes. Under Oregon law, substitutes are entitled to the same sick leave as regular classroom teachers. And yet, the district doesn't want to honor what the law says. So not only are we now following or struggling to follow the contract, we're struggling with following state law and bargaining. And the final issue of our unfair labor practice is around snow days. And this one pains me so greatly because it was really one of our first opportunities, me in this role as president, my first year, new team, new leadership. We really thought things were going to be different. And we spent so many days, so many hours negotiating what we were going to do about snow makeup days. Now, as soon as we signed that agreement, it immediately began being violated. And we could no longer blame previous leadership, past lack of accountability, because this was in a microcosm event. You had principals mandating that teachers did report cards despite the agreement. Where's the accountability there? But furthermore, after hours and hours, days of our team not negotiating, all the other things, figuring out snow days, your team is now saying that it was status quo at all the snow days at the end of the year. And so that's changing the rules right as we play, and that is not the old PPS. And that's not the new opportunities we were hoping for in the rebuilt. So, that is our unfair labor practice that we plan on filing Thursday. And so I'm here with all these educators, and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Because bargaining has really changed in its tone, and I am very fearful that we are headed towards battle lines, which is not in any of our interests, and it's certainly not in our students' interest. So PPS has been in the news a lot lately. Lack of transparency, lack of accountability, lack of a superintendent. Actually, thank you, Tom, for getting that search committee up and running right away because we really want an educational leader. Our district really needs an educational leader, and we are really looking forward to that partnership. And we hope that leader will be a trusted partner who will honor the agreements that are made. So our bargaining team is also offering a reset of outstanding grievances, a chance to resolve these grievances, and the topics are things that have been in the news, administrative leave, evaluations. We need some talk back around these proposals. We need to, we need a reset. We need to settle a contract that allows a new superintendent, the new board, to have, you know, a strong working relationship where we can just start building. Our team has actually offered a lot of proposals, really creative ideas to our mutual solutions that all started around interest-based bargaining, but your team needs to respond to them. And they need... And the topics are things that have been in the news, administrative leave, evaluations. We need some talk back around these proposals. We need to, we need a reset. We need to settle a contract that allows a new superintendent, the new board, to have, you know, a strong working relationship where we can just start building. Our team has actually offered a lot of proposals, really creative ideas to our mutual solutions that all started around interest-based bargaining, but your team needs to respond to them. And they need to bargain in good faith. So when we trained, and I think almost all of us were in the training together around IBB, there was like a trust balloon, and we talked about, you know, you can pop it or you can, you know, inflate it slowly and deflate it slowly. And we have really been trying to put some air into that balloon and build some trust. And the direction that we're going in now is really eroding trust. Not honoring the very first agreement we made was problematic, and changing the rules while we bargain, adding new things, that's eroding all our trust, it's deflating the balloon, and it's leaving us in the situation we are here. So this isn't, this isn't, it doesn't have to be this way. It's Tuesday, we're bargaining tomorrow, and our plan is to file the ULP on Thursday. We don't have to file it on Thursday, but that is certainly our intent if these practices continue. So I'm asking you, as a board, to get involved in the bargain, find out what our proposals are, see what your team has actually offered us back, bargain in good faith with us, and let's get this contract settled now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Lima, is this your last meeting here?
Say it isn't so.
Been so awesome to work with.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just really very special presence on this board. And thank you very much for everything you've done.
Thank you, guys. I'm really sad tonight is my last meeting. But I got an internship this summer and stuff, so it's the best, the best time to go. I guess I want to start by introducing Moses Tran, next year's student representative. He's not next year, he's starting next meeting, but he's incredible, and you guys are going to love him. And we've already started to work together towards some of the things that I and Moses share in concern about, you know, Super SAC in my position. So he'll continue to work with you guys on that stuff. But I guess I'll start by saying that I had an incredible opportunity last week to talk to a group of eighth graders who really picked my brain about student voice and really asked me some really tough questions that I couldn't answer all of them. And I want to share with you, I guess, part of why it was hard for me to answer some of their questions. I think one, their overarching question was, does Portland Public Schools value student voice at all? Because as eighth graders at Boise Elementary, or Boise Middle Elementary School, they did not feel like we do. And I explained to them that, you know, my position and that, yeah, I don't talk very much, I know, but I really do get to give my input. And I told them that, hey, you guys should really get involved in Super SAC. It's a great opportunity to voice your opinion if you choose to make it that. But I guess, I guess, one of my recommendations to them was, when you run for my position, when you're a sophomore in high school after Moses, I want you guys to talk to the board about having more student voice in our committees. I want you guys to talk to the board about how Super SAC is ran and whether it is best used as solely an advisory committee to the superintendent, or whether this board needs a student advisory committee that gets information when the student rep does so that they can actually talk about it and really give you guys their opinion before the decisions are made in these board meetings. And they all got really excited about it and said, "Okay, we're going to do it." So I really hope they do. And I know that Moses and I have talked about what next year is going to look like, and he will do a better job than I did. So I, I hope that that happens. But I also think, you know, my parting thoughts, that moving forward, in our equity work, I talked a little bit with the superintendent about this, that student voice really needs to be, if not centered, very close to center in that conversation, because I think students of color in Portland Public Schools cannot inform you better than anybody else about what students of color in Portland Public Schools need. And I, being a student of color and having friends who are students of color, and having these conversations, because they directly affect us, and it's every day, all of us have really great practical ideas about what could be different. And even if we can't articulate exactly what it is in amazing educational language, can really give you a gist about, okay, what is it that every day we feel like needs to be changed about our educational environment? So I hope that moving forward as a board, we publicly continue to commit to equity and, in practice, really have authentic student engagement in that arena. Is there anything else I wanted to say? Trying to look at my notes. Yeah. Well, and I, and I also think moving forward in our superintendent search, it was really great the way that we included me and other students in the committees, and I hope that continues. And I hope that there, I mean, maybe even becomes two students on the committee, but I really think that that was great and that, moving forward, that should continue. So thank you, guys, for the incredible opportunities. I learned so much being here, even though, you know, I didn't talk a lot at these meetings. People have brought that up to me, and I've had to explain myself, but I, I really have learned a lot. And I also hope that moving forward as a board, I don't know how to say this, but I think you guys really do set a tone and example for the district, and it really is important that we all up here, I guess, I'm part of it, hold each other accountable for the things that we say and the way we interact with people and the way we talk to people. And I have, I've told other people that it's been slightly disheartening, the things that I've seen happen up here. And as a student, I get asked about it. And I think that it's important that as adults, one, you know, we own that, right? I mean, not we, but own that. And I think that also acknowledging that that really does set a tone and set an example for what everybody else does. So thank you, guys, again. I've had a lot of fun and learned a lot, so.
You know, as we all know, by charter, the student representative is not included in personnel matters if we have executive decision. But unanimously, as a group, we said, "We can't begin to discuss this important issue or deliberate on this important issue without a Lima."
Right.
And not just because you bring forward the student voice, but because you, as an individual, provided such insight and such wisdom and just very valuable perspective that, you know, I, the, the process would have been considerably worse without you. So that was, I thought that was a great statement from our whole board that, absolutely not, we don't do this without you. So you just added so much to everything, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And we love your demo pride.
It's my people.
Well, and I, the other thing I'd say is, you mentioned not speaking a lot, but effectiveness isn't measured by the amount of words.
Yeah.
And when, when you spoke, it was to the point, and, and well done, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I think you, you have a small token of our appreciation on next to you somewhere.
Oh, yeah, I do, right here.
So you can take that home and.
Thank you very much, you guys.
Buy books when you go to school.
Yes, I need that. Student loans, man.
Yeah. All right. Okay, we're going to go to the second reading of Bring Your Own Device. First reading was held April 25th. After 21 days of being open for the public comment, the board is ready to vote on the proposed amendments. Staff is available for any questions. Are there any questions from the board? Our new interim CIO. The board, I, yeah, yes, go ahead. Okay, the board will now consider Resolution 5459 to adopt Policy 860042P, Bring Your Own Device policy. Do I have a motion?
So vote.
Move by Director Knowles, for second.
Sure.
Second by Director Sparza-Brown. Any public comment?
No.
No, okay. Any discussion? You guys did great work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is our new interim.
Laura Parker.
Laura Parker. Welcome.
Thank you.
Miss Roll.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right.
Can I just make a comment? I guess my only comment is, and we've had these discussions before about, you know, the inequities across some of our schools and communities and access to technology. And just wanting to ensure that as we think about budgets and in the future of providing those devices for schools that kids wouldn't have a lot of them individually on them. So.
Absolutely. It's, you want to finish?
No, go ahead.
It's critical that we examine the digital divide and the inequities that absolutely do exist, and that is the highest priority in our first step moving forward as we monitor and support our schools and our learners in using, in using devices and implementing the BYOD policy. We are very excited about it and, you know, feel like this is a critical step to our ability to enable students to use those personal devices that are supportive of engagement, that enable collaborative learning, that provide that anytime, anywhere access. And we've thought long and critically about how to support our schools and our learners and our families in ensuring that there are equities in access and use across the board, and that'll be, like I said, our first findings in our first phase of implementation.
Okay. Have you had any thoughts about what that might look like?
In terms of PPS stepping forward? Absolutely. And of course, you know, everything comes with some hopeful commitments of resources. But in our first phases, you know, we'll certainly be looking at wireless access, we'll be looking at the ability for students to access the type of digital content that's being deployed potentially through these devices. We'll be looking at how well students are able to engage in the four Cs, or what are now being called the five Cs, of collaboration with peers and teachers, communication with peers and teachers, creativity, critical thinking, and citizenship. And so that, those are best practices that have come forward in both blended learning and 21st century skill development, and will formulate the types of student outcomes that we're driving towards with this policy. So that's how we'll be measuring the learning and the impact of the policy moving forward.
Okay.
And that might result in a commitment and an ask, of course, of the district and the board, and we hope that you'll step up when we come forward with that, when we look at closing the divide and wireless access and infrastructure devices themselves.
So we'll be taking data, I take it then, to see, you know, like percentage of students at schools that bring their own devices, and the schools that, you know, have a low percentage of students that own those devices, and what the appropriate devices to provide in that kind of a situation?
So in my background, there are actually 21 different indicators that you can look at to determine how well you're providing accessibility to digital learning, and those are 21 different factors around access, the classroom, the environment, and the systems and structures. And so we'll be developing, employing those well-researched factors to develop the research methodology that will help us monitor implementation. Great.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Julie, for bringing that. And thank you for all your great work.
If I could, just briefly, although, of course, with devices, there's a great deal more we need to do of bringing them on. But 10 and 12 years ago, the inequities among our buildings in terms of networking and access were just horrific. And our staff has really done a fabulous job in the last three, four years. And we're able to take steps like these because of that work, and thank you very much. It's meant a lot.
Thank you.
The board will now vote on Resolution 5459. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution is passed by a vote of seven to zero. Student Representative Bradley voting.
Yes.
Voting yes, great.
She can text it in. Text her vote.
We'll now have a first reading of the proposed.
You're collaborating and creating and communicating.
I'm checking on my homework assignments.
Always the student.
Right. First informant.
Superintendent McCain, you want to talk about the exemption from competitive bidding? For one of your fine staff people. Yeah. Hi, Emily.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Emily Courtney, Director of Purchasing and Contracting, and with me is Justin Dollar, Property Management Project Manager.
Project Manager, yep.
So you have in your board packet tonight draft findings and a recommendation to approve use of an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, and I'll call it IDIQ for short, alternative contracting method for the district-wide cold water fixture and partial pipe replacement. So that project is potentially about a three-year project. It's meant to replace fixtures in 90 buildings and approximately 1,500 fixtures. Year one of the project includes fixture replacement and then retesting, and then years two and three, potential partial pipe replacement where retesting of water shows there are still higher lead levels. So in order to proceed with this alternative contracting method, we must obtain from you an exemption from the traditional design-bid-build-low-bid procurement method that is ordinarily required for public improvement projects. In the low-bid method, biddings takes place after design completion, and the project is then awarded to the lowest bidder. This traditional method is not practical here, where staff cannot specify in advance the precise scope of work involved in replacing, like I said, approximately 1,500 fixtures across 90 buildings, as well as the partial pipe replacement where indicated after post-fixture replacement water testing. The IDIQ contracting process begins with issuance of a publicly advertised, fully competitive request for proposals for RFP. The RFP procurement method allows us to evaluate the proposers based on past experience and performance, expertise, a detailed plan for outreach to and utilization of certified small business subcontractors, and other qualitative factors. Through the RFP process, the district will select and contract with several qualified and available contractors, who will then be able to compete for specific fixture or pipe replacement work packages. After qualified IDIQ contractors are selected and under contract, staff will issue a series of requests for job order proposals organized by the eight high school clusters. IDIQ contractors will be able to submit bids on one or more job order proposals based on a time and materials not to exceed basis, meaning the invoicing will be based on actual time and materials required and total invoice is capped at the not-to-exceed amount. The district will issue a work authorization to the lowest bidder on each job order proposal. So that's a plan, and under our public contracting. And under our public contracting rules, the board, acting as the contract review board, may grant exemptions and approve alternative contracting methods only after a properly noticed public hearing. We published notice of this hearing on May 9th in the Portland Tribune and made the draft findings that are in your packet available to the public. And we are here to answer your questions. Thank you.
I want to make a statement just quickly. I want to take this opportunity to thanks our voters and our community for supporting our bond, and that was a huge success, and we really appreciate our community's support. This one is timely because this is the work that we promised the community we will do. And as you see, we have been working and planning as if the bond would pass, and we predicted it, and hopefully it happened. So we're not wasting any time, so that's why we're bringing you this contract today. Thank you.
But you didn't guarantee it, did you, in fact? Any other questions?
I guaranteed it.
Would you explain this?
In layman's terms. I mean, we were fine. I was having trouble hearing, to some degree. And I was trying to follow the best that I could, but it basically was, okay, we can do this, and are we going to split it up? I mean, we're not going out for a bid because of...
I'm happy to take that, Director Buell.
Can I just add to Steve's question? My question is, is it either or both, that it's more expedient to do it this way or that we can dictate the methodology based on what our assessment recommended to us?
Both. So let me explain this, I'll break it down for you. So an IDIQ gives us the ability actually to create then a pool of pre-qualified contractors who demonstrate the actual capacity to do the work. So 1,500 fixtures across multiple sites, over 90 sites, is a lot of work to do in this particular environment. The work itself is actually very complicated. So to actually create a qualified pool of contractors who demonstrate to us that if we say, "Go and do this work, you can do it," we can, then that means that they can do it. Under a low bid, design bid-build process, the lowest bidder doesn't necessarily have to demonstrate capacity or qualification to do it, which means that I can get the lowest bidder, who says, "Yeah, we can do that," and they show up for the work, and then they don't do it. So then we're stuck, right? So the purpose of the IDIQ is then to create a pool of equally qualified contractors with capacity to do the fixture replacement work, to work in coordination with an independent third-party testing, water test, water quality testing vendor, who can actually go out and do the work for us in a timely manner that we dictate. But it remains competitive because they're all competing under job order proposals. So we're going to break it up into packages based on high school cluster, and we'll say, "Here is X number of fixtures that need to be replaced per these specifications. Tell us what you think it'll cost." And then they have to actually explain what it'll cost, and we'll know their hourly rates because they've given the hourly labor rates ahead of time in order to be under this IDIQ contract. So now we're actually having them compete for the work itself, so it remains competitive that way. But then we get to control then the timeline of the work, but we also get price discovery for the work ahead of time under the IDIQ contract. So it's particularly advantageous because this is the first project under the bond out of the gate that, as you know, dates back to almost a year ago, which became a public concern for letting the water. So this is expedient. It actually is, gives us due diligence. We get price discovery. We actually then can manage the process in a way that's useful for the district in terms of, there's a sense of understanding that the people we're going to have do the work are actually qualified and capable to do the work, and there won't be any surprises. Does that answer the question?
So we're dividing it into clusters?
We will divide it into high school clusters. And the reason we're doing that is because...
Suppose I'm a Cleveland cluster, let's say the Cleveland cluster.
That's right.
Okay, and Cleveland cluster, we have a certain amount of work.
Yes.
That we want done in a certain amount of time.
That's correct.
And the price, and we're going to ask, more than one, could people bid on that then?
That's correct. More than, that pool of people that are qualified under the IDIQ can actually bid on that scope of work. But we want them to be pre-qualified, that we have assurances that they have the capacity to actually do carry the work out in a timely manner.
Whatever they bid on.
That's correct.
Now, why is that, why is that different than just a regular bidding?
Sure. So in a low bid, so in a bid, a design bid-build, I would actually have to hire a mechanical engineer to actually come up and do drawings for approximately 1,500 fixtures. That's going to take me a year to draw them. Every single site will have to have its own set of drawings, and I'll put it on the street, and someone will bid on it. Will the contractor actually have expertise in managing multiple sites under one contract, under one client? We won't know. It won't matter at that point, because under low bidding, we don't have to actually get that assurance. So we still get a competitive environment, but we get people that are actually qualified to do the work, and I don't have to actually have a mechanical engineer spend a whole year drawing up 1,500 separate fixture replacement drawings.
And can I, if I, let's say, could I add the Buell contractor, plumbing contractor, business?
Sure.
And I could demonstrate that I could do it, then could I come in and bid on the...
Yes, because you'll...
The Cleveland one, and maybe then the Jefferson one?
Definitely. You would actually be able to do that.
Right. That answered my question. That's, I really appreciate it.
Great. You're welcome.
You're going to get in there the day after school gets out, right?
Straight on that. You bet.
Do I have a motion to consider Resolution 5460, district-wide cold water fixture and partial pipe replacement project exemption from competitive bidding authorization to use indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, alternative contract method 59? So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Constam. Ms. Housen, any public comment?
No.
Okay. Board will now vote on resolution. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, indicate by saying no. The, any abstentions? Resolution 5460 is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Student Representative Bradley voting.
Yes.
Voting yes. Perfect. All right, now we're going to do transportation. Oh, okay.
No, no, transportation.
Okay. Okay.
Want me to just go ahead and invite him down?
Hit it.
Okay. Courtney Wilton is going to come down and do this part, and as Courtney comes down, I would like to comment that this is about his last day here. Courtney has been one heck of an interim and deserves, I think, a lot of appreciation for the work that he's done on a variety of things, but on a personal level, most especially around the snow days where we were all on the phone together at 5:30 in the morning. Anyway, Courtney's been a great addition to the team.
Yes. Absolutely.
I've absolutely enjoyed it, and it's been an interesting and challenging year, but it's had a happy ending too, right? I mean, the bond was kind of everything that we were working towards and, you know, and we didn't know, but to have it pass and also pass in such a dicey manner is great news. And, you know, so pretty, still lots of challenges. I mean, it's just a tough environment we work in, and I, you know, I also really admire the work that you do. You know, you guys are volunteering, and you just deal with so many tough issues, and so I just have a lot of empathy, both for the work and the environment that the board works within and your commitment. And I feel the same way for staff. You know, staff, staff has a tough job, and it was easier for me, because I came in for a year, and, you know, I was an interim, and so I just, I always felt kind of lucky to have had this opportunity. So thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, you want to talk about transportation a bit?
I want to talk about you first.
Sure.
I do want to echo what Bob have said about Courtney, and I really appreciate all the work that he has done for the district and helped us tremendously during your difficult time. You know, as I told Courtney, he still can stay, you know, and we have an open invitation for him, so we've got a lot of position we can put him in, and I'm sure he'll do great work for us. So thank you, Courtney. I really appreciate you and your leadership.
My foursome tomorrow, if you'd like, 9:22 at...
There you go. There you go.
Our next item is the transportation assessment, and this is probably an item that's overdue. We have had quite a bit of challenges last year and probably previously, and we're intending to do something about it. And this item is about doing an assessment and bring some support and help to streamline the operation in transportation and get us in, hopefully, a much better position next fiscal year. So with that, I'm going to have Courtney kind of go over this item and introduce it to you. Thank you.
Sure. You know, we are struggling within our transportation operation. There's just no question about it. And there's many reasons for it, and some of it is a bit beyond our control. The driver shortage has absolutely played into that, and that's a national phenomenon, not just a Portland phenomenon. You know, traffic congestion is worse, but it is bigger than that. And, you know, our system has evolved over time and actually gotten to a point where it just isn't operating as well as it should. And, you know, and so we can kind of sit back and tinker and, you know, make incremental improvements, which, you know, would help, and yet we felt like we needed to kind of make a bigger change. And I think we're pretty optimistic about where we're headed under this plan. And where we're headed is kind of twofold. One, we went, and what you're kind of voting on tonight is kind of the first stages of the RFP, and I want to recognize Director Rosen for working with us on this, helping us develop the scope and then also evaluating the proposals with us. It was myself, Terry, and Mike. And there are three people that responded to this, and essentially what we're asking for is for an independent third-party with expertise about transportation, come in and take a fresh look at our operation and basically independently assess it, and then come up with essentially what we're calling an improvement plan. And, you know, identify those areas where we're just fundamentally not operating as well as we should, and we're fully, you know, we're fully expecting that there will be some of those. So that's kind of the first two stages of this, and that's what you'll be essentially voting on tonight. And the cost of that, I think, is around 60,000 or 65,000. Now, what we also did is, you know, what happens often with audits is they're, you know, they're really good resources, they're well-intentioned, but what often happens is you get them, people intend to implement them, but they're really, really busy, and, you know, sometimes they're conflicted too, because they're kind of part of the prior operation, and so sometimes what happens is they basically sit on the shelf, and we don't get the follow-up and improvement we needed. So another kind of key aspect of this is we want to be able to have the person who has this expertise and is recommending change to be able to come back and help us do this. And that's the third stage of this proposal. That's not something that we're going to decide on tonight, and as I was talking to Director Knowles about this, she rightly said, you know, "That's kind of an operational decision," and she's right about that. And so what we will do is, you know, again, assuming the board is supportive of this, we'll enter into this first stage, get the assessment going, and then schedule a follow-up with our BNO committee to talk about this third stage. I'm excited about it. I think it's actually the right approach. I think we're going to get some support. What we're doing also concurrently with this, again, if the board approves, is we're making some staff changes in transportation. Our current director has voluntarily agreed to step into the assistant director role. She's a really good resource. She'll do, provide really good support there, and then what we'll be able to do is allow this contractor to essentially not drive the bus, but provide the overall direction there. So I like that, because the independent party will, I mean, they'll be reporting to us, and yet they'll be dictating an improvement plan, hopefully. And hopefully, you know, we think we're going to get results. You know, they'll be, if this all goes to plan, or goes as according to plan, we'll complete this assessment and identify the improvement plan by around the end of June. And then that's going to roll into Phase Three, and we'll actually start working on the improvement plan during the summer, which you need to do, given the routing happens then. And so I'm really, really hopeful that when school starts, you know, in late August, you're going to see some difference. It's not, it's not going to be everything, right? I mean, this is going to take some time to dig out of, but I think there's, you know, I don't know, we feel fairly optimistic about it. I don't know. That's a long-winded explanation, but that's kind of how it works. And again, thanks to Mike for helping us with this.
Thanks, Mike.
It seems like a pretty tight timeline from the conclusion of the first two phases to the implementation window and the start of the school year. And so if we're looking at this from the perspective of students and families who need improved service next year over what we saw this year, I'm a little nervous.
Yep. I understand that. I'll tell you a secret. We've had them come in early at their liability, and, you know, basically we said, you know, "You've tentatively been selected. We don't have a contract. It's not guaranteed, but we'd love to have you start coming in early and assessing information," and they've done that. And I've been impressed with them. And so they're gathering information already. We're going to roll into a contracting phase, you know, probably early next week to formalize it, but they're on the ground running, basically.
Yeah, I want to add, and when we met with them, we did explain that we need results, so we need the improvement next year. So they understand that the need and the urgent need for that. So there will be coming up, as they do the assessment, coming up with quick fixes that can help us, short-term fixes while they're developing long-term fixes. So, you know, again, we're not going to fix it all overnight, but I'm really hopeful we will see some significant improvement. I've used this model before in another organization, and it worked really well in the other organization. So it's not our first time trying something like that, at least speaking to myself.
You know, and we will, I shouldn't say we, because it won't be me, but staff will be sending that improvement plan to you, again, probably early July. And you'll get a sense of the scope of it. I mean, it's, you know, there'll be essentially a long laundry list, and then there'll be recommendations in terms of, you know, of this, which we think you can work on. Here's where we think you can, you know, probably get the most bang for the buck in the shortest amount of time. In other words, here's where we think we want to start, and you'll have feedback on that. And so, you know, you may want to reorientate it a bit based on the feedback you've gotten, but you will have that choice to provide feedback and help direct kind of where we start on this.
Sounds good. Great.
Obviously, our biggest problem, it appears to me, tell me if I'm wrong, is that we didn't have enough drivers. I mean, we can figure out the routes, almost with paper and pencil, but we need to get more drivers.
Well, it's part of the problem. Isn't there truth in that?
I don't think it's the only problem. I mean, I'll let Courtney kind of explain it.
No, but it wasn't a huge portion of the problem, that we didn't, we didn't have, you get Thursday morning, and you didn't have enough drivers.
Yeah.
I mean, we didn't have guys who were getting lost in their routes after the first week, you know, I mean...
Well, we started out, yeah.
Were we short buses too, or just drivers?
Not so much, drivers. I mean, it, so I agree with you. That was the number-one problem. Now, along with that, we have a contract which doesn't give us much leverage over the vendor, and that's something we're going to work on next year through our RFP process.
When's that contract up?
It's up at the end of next year, and so we'll be...
So can we recruit drivers into that contract? I talked earlier about trying to recruit drivers from colleges. You and I talked about it today.
Right.
We've got a lot of colleges. I mean, it's an ideal situation for a person who's going to college. You can drive in the morning, go to your class afternoon, or vice versa. I mean, it's a great part-time job for college students, graduate college students picking up, I mean, it's a, you know, you make a fair amount of money. You really do. And it seems, and the problem there is training them. But Trimat trains and has a training thing. We might be able to talk to them to let us piggyback on their stuff. But it seems to me like we'd want to almost begin recruiting drivers right away, regardless of the people who came in. Am I, is that...
No, I think that's right. And we are. I mean, we are working on it, and to the extent we can, I mean, we struggled with having enough drivers as well, not to the same degree as a contractor, but we struggled as well. And if we were able to, you know, quote-unquote, "over-hire," we could take some routes back, and we would be open to that, and that's at our discretion. So anyway, to answer your question, I agree. I think the driver shortage was the number-one problem, and it caused all sorts of other problems. There's other issues as well. Our communication is really poor. I mean, our communication with parents, part of that is technology, part of that is just probably not having enough people in the office to... probably not having enough people in the office to answer the phones when, when things are happening. And, and it kills us. You know, we, we have buses that are late and parents have no idea and they sit around for, you know, and they're late for work or the kids are out there on their own. So it's, it's a, not a good situation and we, we gotta get a handle on it.
If you had more drivers, you wouldn't have, you would have less routes that weren't covered and you would need less communication, right?
Yeah, that's absolutely true.
It seems to me, do we have a, uh, Yusef, do we have a recruitment budget to recruit drivers?
We do. Yeah. I mean, it's, money is not the reason, um, we are not being successful. We, but we, we need to think of other ways to recruit. And, and, you know, to your point, there may be some other alternatives we have that we haven't pursued in the past that could help, and we should be open to that.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Good luck. That was the, my neighbors were going to beat me in the head if the bus didn't get out there.
Tell, tell them we're working on it.
I told them it wasn't me. I don't drive the bus.
Well, you know, you could. We, we hire retirees for bus drivers, you know.
I'm with a discipline on bus. I know that. That's about it.
We, you may have some free time coming up in July, I heard.
There you go.
Well, I was just, I'm glad to hear you talk about the communication piece because we've seen other districts who have the real-time apps where parents can see where the bus is and they're cheap. So something like that, that might be, cheap would be really beneficial.
Yeah, it'll, you mean, honestly, it won't be next year, but it's something we can work on next year and, and maybe have it in by the following year. And, and people are used to that. You know, they're used to Uber and Lyft and kind of seeing when the vehicle is coming and it's, the technology is out there.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Courtney. Uh, we're gonna, there's, it's in our business.
Terry, I want to just say something. I want to thank Courtney again because the one thing that really was great about working with you is when I asked the question, you gave me a real answer, not an evasive one, an answer of how, and that is exactly, that's a model for all our employees. And I personally really appreciate it. And I appreciate from people sitting in the front row and from Yusef, they're getting real answers, and that's really great.
Very great.
Yeah? Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rivers.
Will.
Maybe I might see you on one. Um, all right, so, uh, Ryan, pardon me?
Courtney, thank you. Don't be a stranger.
No, we're, we're not gonna.
Oh, you voted then?
No. Yes, in the business agenda. Yeah. All right, so we're gonna do a budget amendment. Ryan, Lori, you wanna?
All right, so we have got in front of you amendment number three for the current year budget. So this is the 2016-17 budget. And under Oregon budget law, we're required to assure that our expenditures are less than our budget. And so this is just one technical correction to our budget in our claims, our self-insured claims reserve area. So we had $1.5 million in contingency in that area, and we're moving that 1.5, $1.5 million out of contingency and moving it into claims expense. And this is to allow us to address some accruals that we are going to need to make by the end of the year for self-insured claims.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board? Appreciate it. We'll now consider that amendment, uh, resolution 5461, amendment number three to 1617 budget for school district number one, Jable on the County of Oregon. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Knowles. Any other discussion? Board will now vote on 5461. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, indicate by saying no. No abstentions. Resolution 5461 is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Student Representative Bradley voting.
Yes.
All right. Um, okay, we now, the, uh, will recess the board from its regular meeting and convene as a budget committee. The board as the budget committee has held three public hearings on the proposed 217-18 budget. Superintendent McCain, would you like to make any comments?
Uh, just a few. Uh, you know, as, there's been a lot of work that has gone into the budget, uh, most especially Yusef and his team, but everybody, actually all the administrative team has been involved as well as, as the board in that, uh, you had a chance to see the preliminary budget a week or so ago. Uh, we designed the budget around, uh, student learning, uh, equity and health and, health and safety of our students. Uh, it's always difficult when you're in a cut budget. Um, you heard words to that earlier tonight. Um, and, uh, you know, the only thing I can say is that, uh, I think this budget represents a really good faith effort, uh, to do the right thing for kids. And with that, I turn this over to others.
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, in this budget, uh, obviously you have seen a lot of the material that we have presented in, in the proposed and during the work session. And this is more of a summary, just kind of recap some of the stuff that we've done and, and also make the modification based on the work session and, and the significant number of questions we've got from board members. And, uh, they're really good questions and we really appreciate all the, the efforts that each and every one of you put into, um, this process in term of asking us the questions and, and, um, helping us in, in, in the process of, of coming up with a budget. Um, I'm really surprised we don't have a lot of audience. Uh, we must have done a good work, um, with the budget.
Sunny day.
Yes. It's a beautiful day out there. Um, so the agenda, we're gonna go over the guiding principles, um, for the budget and staffing, the budget summary. Um, we're gonna go over how we balance the budget. We'll show you additional investments that we have made, um, certain office and non-school budget reductions and, and the reduction we made in staffing in schools, then what are the next steps? Um, I'm gonna kind of repeat the budget priorities that we have, um, put forward. It's, I'm gonna just read them, repeat info, and I'm not gonna go through a lot of the stuff because you've seen it many times. Uh, the three priorities is educational equity, learning and achievement, and student health and safety. Uh, in term of equity, continue to receive equity adjustment in staffing allocations. In term of learning and achievement, uh, protecting core programs. Do K8 staffing ratio, um, maintain that, that funding? And we actually did additional investment for some K8 schools, supporting focus and priority schools and maintaining funding for special ed. That was our initial thought. However, during the work session, um, we're, we're proposing an investment of about a million bucks roughly towards special ed and, and additional investments. Term of student health and safety, we have done restructuring and our goal is to enhance funding for environmental projects and maintain transportation funding and ensure that specifically new schools that were, um, maintained or renovated with the 2012 bond, receive additional support in custodians and, and maintenance, um, support. So, the next slide. So we're proposing a budget of about $617 million budget. Something to keep in mind, this budget is, make, we're making an assumption that the revenue at the state level is 8.1 billion for K12 education. That's the number that COSA and other school districts in the state agree to use as, not necessarily appropriate level to maintain funding, but that's probably more realistic number that we're hoping legislatures will come up with. In order to maintain funding, we really need 8.4 billion dollar. So our assumption is 8.1 with 4% contingency. Most recently, we have seen the projected revenue at the state level and it shows improvement. It's, it's now the shortfall is down to about 1.4 billion. However, that improvement does not change our assumptions because we're assuming at a higher level than what the state proposed anyway. So we, we're gonna go over the, the reductions. We have made some reduction at the school level initially, and we have made adjustment to that to reduce the impact on classroom and certain functions. And we did reinvestments in, in several areas and we'll, we'll cap that. Uh, the, what I want to just show here is the, the bottom line in this slide is about 74% of our resources are from state school fund and, and local taxes. I have already went through that. That's the state budget and it really doesn't make a difference in where we are, where we're going with our budget. Um, in term of our reserve, um, thank you for passing the reserve policy. I know the CPRC have worked really hard to come up with really good, good reserve policy based on best practices from the GFOA, and we're going in the right direction. And, and this budget will, will inch us closer to where we need to go. Um, in term of what, what we're proposing and, and the only thing I want to highlight here, you've seen this slide many times, is again, our resources growing at 2% while our expenditures are growing at 6%. And that's just a mismatch and, and a huge, uh, difference that our legislatures unfortunately are not realizing in, in their proposal of the budget. This one is an important slide and, and that's where we highlight the, the reduction we've made and where we have reinvested or restored some cuts. The equity formula, initially we proposed a reduction for K5, middle and K8 of 1%, reducing it from 8% to 7%. We're proposing, and this, uh, request to approve the budget to restore that, um, to 8%. That's 1.8 million dollars we're putting back. Uh, then the, uh, one of the contracts, uh, IM Academy, we're restoring the cut we proposed initially, which is about $80,000. That's coming back. Uh, again, the piece in schools, uh, about 138, we're proposing to restore that as well. And the Portland Workforce Alliance, there was a proposal reduction, we're restoring the reduction to the current level. In addition to that, we have, um, had a bunch of contracts that amounted to about 300.3 million dollars, which some of these contracts are part of that. In term of, that's in, in the equity. Um, in term of learning and achievement, um, it's worth about 8.2 million dollars During the work sessions, um, we got consensus, or my read on it, that restoring the PE library and counselors positions in schools. So we're putting these back to the same level that we had this year. That's 3.6 million dollars. In addition to that, we have added an investment in special education of about a million dollars, 0.9 million. That's an add above and beyond last year current level of funding. And, um, we're also, in that budget, we, there is a proposal to add about 250,000 roughly for, um, literacy contracts.
What does that mean?
You know what?
The reading results collaborative.
That's, that's, that's the assessment, right?
No, this is SMART, children's.
Oh, 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 okay. Yeah. These are the, the five contracts that you, the SMART, okay. Investments that we have made in addition to that in, in curriculum development, 0.9 million, um, 0.9 million for coaches. Uh, literacy assessment is about $400,000. And K8 staffing, that's an added support specific to K8 schools. And direct staffing allocation to schools of, um, 0.8 million dollars. Uh, in term of health and safety, we, uh, we have done restructuring within operation and we, we reshuffled the resources and we focused them on health and safety in, in specific to maintenance and, and custodians of about 4.3 million dollars. We also added a million dollars for new schools, new built schools using the 2012 bond, uh, money. Emergencies, we're setting aside $400,000 to deal with emergencies. Not enough, obviously, but, um, hopefully we won't need it. Uh, but we, we earmarked that much for that. How we came up with the money is, is these are the resources we have, um, we have, um, received more information that show our MESD revenue would have, would increase by about a million dollars. Uh, we also will have, we'll realize some saving in, in health benefit worth about 6 million. We're using about 4.8 million of that this year. How much we will really realize, we will not know till toward the end of the year. It'll be after we, we approve the budget. So I think we're safe to use that much money for this, this year. This is a one-time thing and, uh, we'll probably re, take a look at that next year. Then we have other cost savings in, in operation of about 0.9 million. In, in this particular slide, we'll show you where we have done the cut. You've seen this before and, and what's the net impact on, on the, the central office after we have restored some cut and redirected some investments to schools and, and other areas within, um, the district. In term of, uh, school staffing, um, the net impact is a, is about 7.3 million, um, down from about 14-something million initially that we proposed. Uh, in term of staffing, we showed you in our proposed budget back in, um, March, if I remember correctly, March 14, about 124.7 total FD we would have reduced from schools. That's down to about 71. We don't know exactly how many of them are teachers. We will not know till principals finish their work with the schools and then figure out where they allocated their resources in term of teachers. My guess will be reduced significantly and we probably, um, won't have, I, I probably can, can say, um, with great confidence that many of the folks that, if they are teachers, they'll have probably an opportunity to apply for a job because we lose about 200 to 300 teachers roughly a year, um, about 125 roughly for retirement and other move outside the state or, or pick different, um, career, et cetera. So, um, I don't anticipate we'll see significant reduction in our teachers, um, probably none. We'll, we'll see how that play out when, when we finish that staffing. The last piece is 250,000. Last year, we have had about 500,000 for library books, taken from the consolidated budget from schools. This year, um, the proposal or the, the consensus we got from the board is about 250,000, cut that in half toward library books. And we did ask our instructional folks to work with the schools to come up with, um, the ideal model, the best model that help our schools and reduce as much as possible burden on their consolidated budget, to come up with how and what the formula to take this money back toward library books. And with that, we're asking you to approve the budget. Or, well, answer any questions. The rest of the stuff, you've seen it, I'm not gonna go through it.
Can you just, um, reiterate for us, if the state budget comes in at less than 8.1, what is our Plan B?
Um, well, they've been the reserve. I mean, that's the, we'll just take it from the reserve.
And this budget has 4%?
Yes.
Any other questions? Steve? Julie?
Well, I just want to make a comment about, uh, thank you for pulling out the, uh, information on the literacy adoption as we are moving into a phase two. I, we, we had requested, uh, early on, uh, with the, when the pilot began in the fall for literacy adoption, to have a program evaluation of it and to look closely at student data, just to make sure that we're on track with the right materials that are, um, equating to student success. And that data isn't available yet, so, um, we'll, you know, that budget I would be approving with the caveat that we'll look at the data in June, um, in a teaching and learning meeting and, uh, make some decisions about really moving on, um, the pilot for the next cycle of schools. So both the outside evaluation that we had asked for and then looking at, um, the data for those 10 schools in terms of their reading benchmarks. So, yeah. So that's been slow in coming. So, any comments?
I certainly support what Director Asparza-Brown said, uh, but, uh, really first, I do want to thank all of you so much. This is, uh, really been. It, it's been an enormous amount of work and, uh, it, it's very, very solid. And, uh, it, it has been a real joy in spite of the cuts. it has been a real joy, in spite of the cuts, in spite of the problems, to work on this with you. And very specifically to the very real issues that Ms. Heffer raised earlier, Mr. Dutcher and a team of people from across the district, school principals, representatives from HR, have been working very hard, putting in heroic efforts through this year to move up our budget process going forward, so that we do not get into these terrible situations where we are harming our school communities before, months before we are able to pass a budget. And I think next year, it's going to be night and day, and I'm really looking forward to that. Thank you.
Appreciate your persistence on that, because, you know, staffing is not just FTE, as you have brought to our attention continuously. Staffing is human beings with relationships with kids, and we need to do everything we can systemically to nurture those relationships and support them, and not look at them as replaceable for our kids. I just wanted to make one comment with regard to the, some of the partnerships. So, this is something that we talked about in our work session, so the literacy collaborative and work systems and peace in schools. I mean, this is something that I would like to see more of, partnerships with these nonprofit entities that are bringing two or three times the value of what we're investing into our schools. So, they're doing private fundraising, they're leveraging our investments, and it doesn't make sense for us to, you know, lose the whole programming by removing our small portion of investment when they're really bringing a lot more to the table for our kids. So, I appreciate the recognition of how important that is and how much we want to grow those kind of partnerships.
Second that. You know, plus, I think in the budget process, what I did find is, we really, I'm proud of us, we came together at looking at what was the best for students and keeping as many services for the students and, and keeping teachers. And I'm just really glad that we were able to, I think this process was so much better this year for us, and that we, working together, thank you all. It's, we've come to a good solution, as good as we could, given the circumstances now. And we've restored a lot of services, so. Thank you.
And I'm, you know, appreciative of, of the fact that we really took a hard look at central administration and made some, made some adjustments there, consistent with some restructuring. You know, there may be some more down the line to be done, but that was a big part of what, what we planned to do as well, and that was definitely reflected in the budget.
I guess one more thing, I just want to say, thank you, Bob. I really appreciate your leadership, and I appreciate the board. I mean, the work session was really great effort and a great collaboration, and a lot of good work, and a lot of good question helped us get to this point where we can get a budget and move really smoothly, in my view. The one thing I want to point out is, you know, this is a difficult year, but I hate to be the one who talk about the future in not as hopeful way, because the state budget does not look good, and even, even at 8.1, if they get there, it's not going to be great. The following biennium is going to be much more difficult to maintain workloads that we have had in 2010, 2011. Be quite honestly, it's going to be very difficult. Not that we don't want to do that, but that's one thing to keep in mind going forward. We can't get stuck in the past, and the past is going to change. Things will change. If we're going to improve and transform this organization and get more efficient, we're going to have to do things differently, and we can't be stuck in the past. To do things the way we've done it for years, it's not going to change the outcome we will look for. In order to improve, we have to change, and certain things will have to change and can't stay the way it is. It's just, that's the reality. So, you're going to have to keep that in mind as we move forward and as we adopt next year budget and the following biennium, because things will look different if we're really serious about change. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Lori and Yusuf and Ryan. It was a much better process this year, and I felt like we asked you guys tough questions, and you're really responsive, really specific, and it just made the whole thing a lot easier, even in this tough time, so thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. The three of you sitting at that table have given me so much good information without any hassle, and I got basically what I really needed, and it was great to have that, because it hasn't always been that way around here, and it was terrific. And I really appreciated it, and I think this is really a very good budget. Looking for fat or something, it's pretty darn hard. There's still things I think that we could be doing slightly differently, but they're, they're not, they're not huge things with one exception, but the, and I want to comment about that at the end, but we got the work, I want to go through the things a little bit that the teachers talked about when they came today. Workload, I mean, isn't it, we did say in our contract that we take two days off if we cut teachers, and we use that to put teachers back. That's the contract, isn't it? I mean, and that's the contract. But we're not, we're bargaining around that at this point. Is that what we're doing? Because we can't put the two days on and not cut teachers and stay within the contract unless we rebargain the contract. That's my understanding of it, and I think it's, isn't that clear?
I think, Steve, the workload language is specifically the reason, the contract that we cannot change the work from 2010, 2011, school year.
But there's also the.
That's the more, the more critical piece than the 192 versus 190 days. We are in bargaining, we are working with, in good faith. We're trying to do the best we can under the circumstances, but as I said earlier, things have got to change. We can't do business the way we have done in 2010, 2011 and expect different outcome.
Yes, correct, but isn't it, isn't it correct that we need to take the two days, if we don't change the contract from where it is now, we need to take two school days off and put that into teachers? That's what the contract now says.
Yeah, it's being bargained as we speak.
Yeah, but we can bargain that, but that, I'm correct, aren't I? That's what the contract.
That's what the current language says, yeah. For that particular one.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we all, everybody in the room is in the same place, that we know that. I think the other two things I can take up with the superintendent that I have here about the workload and stuff and dealing the snow days and prohibited subjects, I think they're probably accurate on the prohibited subjects, would be my guess. But the one comment I have, and this has nothing to do with really budgeting, it's, we never have went after and gone after, as a school district, really the, what I think is the single worst problem in the school system for educating children, and that's the fact that we still are continuing to take children who can't speak English and put them in high school and middle, middle school classrooms with no English skills at all and expect them to be able to be successful, which there's no way on this earth that they can be successful when they enter that late, when they're in the K-5 and even 6, if it's self-contained, they can be successful. And they can work through, a good teacher can work them through. There's things you need to do, and we need more skills around that, but yeah. But when you dumping those kids into those ninth grade and 10th grade classrooms with no English, and you're putting them into a biology classroom, good luck, they can't be successful. And it's the one thing that I really feel like failure for not getting that done, and I hope the future board coming will get it done. It needs to be done. We need to be teaching those children English, and we need to be teaching them English before we dump them into a classroom where it's all English. I mean, it's, it's just common sense. All the evasiveness that I put up with for a couple, three years around it is pretty much gone in the district. Nobody's buying the evasiveness anymore, like, oh, if you, if you do certain things in the classroom. No, you can't do certain things in the classroom to make that work. I'm sorry, what anybody tells is baloney. And we need to look at that this next year. I hope the new, the new people coming on the board will put that right. It's the number one problem in the school district that, that is still out there that we haven't addressed at all, and it's not the budget people. I just took this opportunity to say that as I'm going out the door, and geez, it makes me feel bad. And I hope, and we're starting to work on that foundational idea, where we have a foundation across, and then we layer the, layer the special programs and on top according to need. And I, and I hope everybody will continue to work on that who comes in on the new board. It's terrific, we've done some great work so far. It's very important that we get to that, at least to the point where we know what that would cost. And we're not there, but we're, we're on the way, and I hope the people on the school board who are going to still be on the school board will continue to push for that, and hopefully, they'll even get those kids who come in. We all talk about, you know, the ICE, and it's so, we're worried about the ICE coming in and taking in how terrible and how we want to be a school district that supports all these children, and then when their children come, we toss them in the classroom where all they speak is English, and they don't speak Farsi at all, and we have not trained them, and, and we have not given them what they need to learn English so they can be halfway successful and have a chance. We're shoving them in there, and it's, it's terribly hypocritical for us to talk all about that and then for our school system to not do it, and I hope next year, at the very least, we will do it, whoever is still on the board, and maybe even get started in your tenure, starting on July, July 1st. And maybe even Bob gets started now, that'd be great. Let's get, let's get going, let's get it organized and started. Thank you very much, and thanks for the wonderful work. Really, this has really been a good budget process. We're not up at midnight and 1:00 in the morning.
Oh, thank goodness. Steve, you would have loved it today at Albina Rotary. They had, they honored four scholars from PPS, one of whom is a young woman from Roosevelt who grew up in a refugee camp. She was from the Congo, grew up in a refugee camp in Rwanda, came here when she was about 12, and is graduating with a 3.7 and going to college.
That's great. There are a lot of children who can do it, just most struggle, but that's need.
So, I also wanted to comment, Steve, I really appreciate your passion on that topic and for those particular students, and we will continue to focus and look, look specifically at their success. I disagree respectfully with that model, because I know from looking at those models across the country and working with some of the systems, that they haven't really had a good academic impact, but I do agree that we need to do something to boost the achievement of our English learners, and so I think that will be another one of our goals. Hopefully, the new board will see that as a priority as well. It's important that, at the same time as they're learning English, that we can't negate the content, so it's really a twofold piece, but I do agree with you that every teacher really should be trained on how to instruct English learners, and that's the way that we're going to make a difference.
What I'm really saying is that there are staying models in the country that are doing what I'm talking about. They don't exist, and we need to be doing what I'm talking about in order to have those children become successful. And the model I'm talking about is where you take children, and you have to do it voluntarily, and you put them in a school, and you teach them English for a period of time, and it's intensive English language instruction for a period of time, which then allows them to go out of school, but it's not a lengthy, it's not two years, or it's not, that's what a lot of the models are, and they're not successful, a lot of those models, that's true.
Well, they're called newcomer schools, and they're.
But it's not the newcomer, it's not the newcomer school that I'm talking about, really. They're, what I'm talking about is there aren't successful models across the country, because A, it's against, it's against federal law to do it unless the people volunteer to do it. You have to get volunteers, and you have to set it up in a certain way. And there are, there are incredibly successful, incredibly successful models of doing that, where you're going from English to other languages. All you got to do is go down there to Provo, Utah, where they train, they take thousands and thousands and tens and thousands of high school people, freshmen and college people, and they train them in a certain language, and they're able to go out into the community in an eight-week period. After eight weeks, go out into the community and actually speak the language and begin to get going, and after a little while, they're very good at it. And so, there are those models, that, that model exists. Be glad to share that one with anyone.
Anybody else? Alima, do you have any comments?
I have one last comment, which is that it's really huge that we were able to restore all of the proposed cuts to sped, and when we first started going through that with a fine-tooth comb, trying to figure how we're going to get along without each of these roles that are so important, that was really awful, and I think, you know, it was clear in our work session that that was a huge priority for, for all of us, so I'm really grateful that that remains whole.
I just want to confirm, it's not just restoring, we're actually investing a million dollars in.
That's right, yeah, with the addition of the two rooms, yes. Yeah, thank you.
And then I'd like to, a point of clarification in terms of the media specialists and library assistants. So, essentially, we're restoring those positions that were initially cut.
Yeah, we're going back.
With both of those.
Yeah, we're going back to where we had.
Okay, perfect. Well, now, vote on the budget as a Budget Committee, Resolution 5462. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, second. Okay, moved by Director Asparza Brown, second by Anthony. Dr. Anthony? Ms. Susan, any public comment?
No.
Any other board discussion? Steve?
Yeah, I'm voting yes, but I'm going to vote with the idea just that we will follow the contract unless we get the contract changed. In the end, we're going to follow the contract, because we have had times when we haven't followed the contract on this board with these seven people here, and I don't want to do that again, and I'm voting based on that.
All right. Board will now vote on Resolution 5462. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution 5462 is approved by a vote of 7 to 0. Student Representative Bradley?
Yes.
Voting yes, okay. We'll now adjourn the board as the Budget Committee and call the normal board back to order. We'll now consider the remainder of the business agenda, having voted on Resolutions 5459 through 5462. Susan, any changes to the business? Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the business agenda? Moved by Director Knowles. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Anthony. Any public comment on the?
No.
Okay, we'll now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of 7 to 0, with Student Representative Bradley voting.
Yes.
Voting yes, all right. Your last vote.
My last vote.
The next meeting will be held June 13th. This meeting is adjourned.